All right, I guess we'll get.
Let's get it going, 5:30.
About 30? All right, let's get on, get started.
Don't go.
Pledge of Independence to the Lord of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, the Winter Park Minor League Team just won in the World Series.
Yay!
So we...
They won the whole thing?
No, championship game's tomorrow, so they play tomorrow. But anyway, I don't need to watch that anymore.
They finished just in time.
I know, the 12 of you, my other older son, they were not as well. Uh, all right, so Minutes from July 15, 2025. Everyone have a chance to take a look at that?
Yep.
Short meeting. Anyone have any corrections, comments, motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, they are approved. Moving on to Agenda Item A. Discuss and review a text amendment to amend pier and dock lighting standards. We discussed this last meeting. Thought we'd bring it back today for a little bit more additional discussion after we looked at the text amendment. Uh, I will let Robert have it.
Hi, um, I just wanted to say that before I got into it that I already talked to Chairman Wardman and, oh, by the way, hello. Sorry for having that, I wish it were not right now. But, uh, anyway, so we did discuss at the last meeting for this text amendment that, um, the timeframe for decorative lighting should be from, I would say from Thanksgiving until January, um, just because Thanksgiving changes every year, so it would be...
Saying January 1?
Uh, January 15th, I'm sorry, which is the current deadline to remove decorative lighting. Um, so I will add that in.
I was gonna say January 10th.
We discussed the Monday prior to Thanksgiving because it had changed.
Yeah, and then the...
Oh, the Monday prior, okay.
Just because a hotel being on Friday, I'm sure everyone's not gonna be out there on Thanksgiving Day, but maybe putting up lights.
Monday prior, okay, to Thanksgiving.
That gives everyone a big, uh, loosely a week to get ready.
I made that note there.
Where is that one? Where is that? Is it in here? Oh.
It's under the, um...
By our minutes, say, um, Monday before Thanksgiving to January 10th.
Yeah, so I made that note.
That'll work, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yes, that's what the minutes say. So, I can go into the background of the lighting, but since this is, um, you know, this is proposed for, uh, you know, forwarding the text amendment to simply address for safety, safety reasons and whatnot, docks and piers, uh, lighting. Get some memo here in just a moment. There it is. It was confusing because it was on the back of one of these pages. Um, so basically, you know, it reiterates existing ordinance and reorganizes it with, and modernizes it. Um, so shielded fixtures only, which just means, the, in the old ordinance, it said to control, but we're trying to eliminate uplighting, so full cutoff, meaning light doesn't, uh, emanate above the 90-degree plane of the light fixture, which I already enforce as such. It changes the height limits on the docks, um, and the piers. There's a, uh, prohibition on bare light sources and outdoor lighting, uh, with, to include decorative lighting, but they carve out for the Monday before Thanksgiving until January 10th. Yeah, 10th, sorry, I forgot where it went down. 10th. And then we had a discussion about what we can regulate over the water, et cetera. And, um, I think the intention from the beginning was lights connected to boats that are docked. Um, we're not going to be kayaking out to the middle of the water to hand someone a zoning violation for, you know, a light violation. That would be, um, what is within our power is where the state grants the town an easement, which is to the pier headline. So if a boat, kayak, whatever, is docked in our easement, uh, which it has to be, it can't, uh, you know, exceed the pier headline, then, then I think everyone would agree that we're within our rights to issue a lighting, uh, violation. And that pretty much pertains to the fishing lights and the underwater lights.
So, so a boat can't, can't park on the outside of the pier?
The pier headline, which is a line that typically extends beyond their pier. It's basically...
Like maybe four feet, five feet or something beyond the...
I would need a survey.
Half of this is in the boat.
Yeah, so that's where, when, if it is connected to the pier dock, which is in our, um, our easement, that's where we would be able to, to regulate that.
Can you change the wording on that? Because I know it's specific things. Can you put, um, any structures, including but not limited to boats, and you can put whatever else you have in there? So you kind of, you leave open, because I think we, it's, we're being a little specific in terms of boats or, or something else, um, that are attached to docks. So I just kind of want a catch-all.
Sure. Um, what, what did you have in mind for that? I said, any structure included but not limited to...
We talked about boats, um...
Kayaks.
Kayaks, what, what, um... I'm just thinking like, what, what was the condo classified as?
The houseboat, you mean?
It was a houseboat, but whether or not it was a vessel or not, vessel or not, vessel or non-vessel. So I just want to make sure that...
He said it was a luxury vehi- he claimed it was a luxury vessel. At the beach, you know, Ricefield Beach said, no, it's not because you can't, so...
Well, so I just want to make sure that we're incorporating not only the vessel, and whatever, they, they said that too.
Good point, yeah.
Because we don't want to have houseboats that are attached docks that aren't included in that.
The wording on that's gonna get a little weird because we define houseboat, I mean, we, we prohibit houseboats in any zoning district and then apply that to our extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Well, how about, how about any, any vessel or non-vessel, including but not limited to boats, kayaks?
Oh, sure, okay, that sounds good.
Any structure.
Are you talking about the underwater lights or just the lights in general on...
Well, we're, I think what, these are mainly towards underwater lights is what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Yes. But at the same point, you're right.
Because underwater lights, point blank, no. Doesn't matter what it's attached to, whether it's floating, not floating.
Yeah, as long as it's attached to the dock. So if there's a boat out there in the middle and, you know, you have those little, those LED lights on the back of your boat, we can't regulate those. But yes, so if it's attached to the dock, underwater lights are...
Yes.
Have been prohibited. And I think that's what y'all talked about, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so any structure included but not limited to boats, kayaks, luxury vessels or non-vessel? What does it say, vessel or non-vessel?
It just leaves, it just leaves it open.
Well, that's what he called it, a luxury vessel.
It leaves it open a little bit more if we're specific in saying boat, kayak, vessel.
Yeah.
Then if someone else comes in and goes, well, I don't follow under three, I can do that.
Oh, yeah.
So we're just, we're doing including but not limited to.
Makes perfect sense. So we've got the dates, uh, Monday before Thanksgiving to January 10th, and then change the, or add the language for any structure included but not limited to boats, kayaks, vessels or non-vessels to both commercial and residential docks and piers. For underwater decorative or fishing lights attached to docks, piers, boats, that's where I'll stick it in right there, where it says boats or land, or land are prohibited. So that will go on, that additional language will be worked into subsection E.
Did you, did you catch non-fishing lights as well?
I think you said, I think you said...
Well, I just said...
Two other types, decorative lights.
Decorative or fishing lights, yeah. Would, would underwater lights mounted to the, the islands still be considered decorative though?
Not sure. Well, yeah, I mean, that's the issue, and we're the leading terminology here, so is there a strict definition of a vessel?
Right.
Legally?
Yes.
Does it have to have a motor or not a motor?
Could that, that...
Could it be the Commodore Club?
And that's why I was saying vessel and or non-vessel. So you can incorporate, so if someone doesn't come in here and say, I'm a non-vessel, I get to do it.
Gotcha.
I mean, was that, what, you told me...
So if they say that it's a houseboat, or they say, no, we're not a houseboat, we're a vessel, then we got them both ways, I guess.
So what was, what was the intent of the committee when you're talking about pier, underwater?
To prohibit them in general.
Yeah, it just came back to the fundamental thing of, of trying to reduce the amount of light that just keeps increasing throughout the town.
Is this, would that, what we're doing be consistent with what y'all wanted to do?
Yes.
Except...
Yeah, it's prohibiting it.
Yeah.
I was just picking, making sure that it didn't have some kind of a loophole, like, well, they're not for fishing these lights.
I mean, shoot, anytime there's a loophole, including but not limited to, because, I mean, it really does.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It makes it a tough argument.
You made a commoner question there about, well, if it's attached, or somebody, if it's attached to a pole underwater. Somebody said it.
Yeah, the, like, if the light is...
It's an underwater light.
Right, exactly, yeah, you're right. Um, so, and then the question came up about the Commodore Club. I don't think that it is technically considered a vessel because it is not self-propelled in any fashion. Like, it literally has to be barged wherever it's gonna go. Um, unlike the, the houseboat, which is, uh, I'm not sure... Well, it is, by our definition, in our ordinance, it is a houseboat. It means every definition of a houseboat. I mean, you can't even steer it.
You can't steer, you have to steer.
How is it an available vessel?
So what were the, what were the motors on there for?
Push it straight. You literally have to strap another boat to it to steer it.
Yeah.
Which in my, in, in my interpretation means that it's being barged in, whether, whether the steering vehicle meets the definition of an actual barge or not.
They were tied up, and I got a video where I passed my house.
Oh, 100%. I mean, I looked at all, I looked at all the floor plans and I did, I looked at the videos, um, of the walking tour. I looked at all the videos of the boats that were passing.
There's no bridge on it, there's no bridge.
There's no way to steer it. I mean, the, the motors on it are essentially superficial and push it straight, and you literally have to have a boat, um, more to the, the guest berth in order to steer it in any direction.
But the motors do work, because there was a room where the motors didn't work, but I saw them, you could see...
Well, no, I saw the motors did.
I saw her do my turn.
But I also saw the motor working on the boat that it was strapped to.
Yeah.
So...
Kind of suspiciously.
It's exactly...
I thought it was clear what it was.
They ran in the ad, telling you to rent the place so we can have a wonderful vacation, so...
Well, whoever it is needs a better IT person because their website is absolutely impossible to navigate. So, that's neither here nor there, but, um, getting back to this, um, we eliminated the, the lighting fixtures. Uh, I think I went over this last time. The, the poles, dropped them down by 10 feet in order to reduce the amount of reflection that you're gonna get based off the height of the lighting, because you can stop it at 90 degrees, but the higher it is, obviously, the more opportunity you have for reflection and glare on, on the water, which is a, um, which is a safety issue. And if there is a, a commercial operation that needs that, then they can just, I mean, you know, they can, uh, appeal that interpretation, I suppose. But I think that after talking to, um, folks from the marina and everything, you just don't need a 25-foot tall light. And so since we don't have any, we probably, you know, we won't need any, so, and we don't even allow, um, marinas anymore anyway, so what is existing, unless they, uh, get an amendment to an existing special use permit, won't be expanding that operation, so we shouldn't be seeing those anymore. But we do take into account the piers, um, on the oceanfront because they are taller than 25 feet. Um, but that is, that, I think, let's see, private piers and docks, 10 feet above their connection point on the mainland. That's the only thing that needs to be figured out, honestly, is like crystal pier.
When we got to the, uh, the oceanfront lighting issues and turtles, et cetera.
Right.
That, uh, we would try to address the, since it wasn't naturally happening.
Yes.
By virtue of the elders.
Right. And they have changed their light also since then.
They've changed the lamps, right?
Yeah.
So they're the amber color?
They're amber now, yeah. They're still not, wait, they're still not full cutoff, but I think we can talk to them about that. But I think we've been talking to them about that for a couple years. So, but at least they've got the amber light, so the turtles won't go towards that, those lights anymore.
That's the big issue right now.
Right, exactly.
Are there any safety lights, uh, are there any lights that can be considered safety lights for underwater?
For underwater?
Mm-hmm. I mean, is it...
When I was, when I was researching underwater lights, the, I didn't see anything, uh, for that.
Okay.
I mean, not that you would have permanently affixed, which is the intent of this text amendment, is a, is a, is a way to permanently affix them. I mean, obviously, somebody out there is doing any sort of emergency or rescue work, would be perfectly fine to have underwater lights.
Yeah.
So there's no issue there. And I, I also talked to the department heads, um, as far as, uh, what would be, uh, any concerns for them, and they didn't have any, with the exception of the, but this doesn't really go back to the, this goes back into the, the lighting ordinance as a whole, not necessarily docks and piers, and that's safety, uh, for floodlights and, and, uh, you know, security lighting that's activated by motion. Um, you know, we still want to have those, but we can, I don't think that there was any concern about, uh, our, our language that will hopefully come later about asking them to, the lights to shut off after 10 minutes of activation, which is, instead of it being on all night, like, it comes on at 10 o'clock because somebody walked by and then it never goes back out. Like, we just want to avoid that, but that's not in this one.
There were, yeah, there were two issues with regards to that type of safety lighting. Flood lighting, that's triggered, and either, it gets triggered every 14 seconds because of a blowing tree.
Right.
But the other thing was that it's just aimed in properly.
Right. Yeah, and we, we have, we have the language to avoid, uh, trespass issues written. Uh, it's just a little bit more difficult with the current ordinance because I don't believe that our current ordinance actually defines exactly what light trespass is, but it is pretty much understood to be more than .1 foot candles at the property line. So let's just say, um, let's just say Jimmy's house is over here, my house is over here, and our property line is right here. Well, if I can stand here with a lumen meter, then I can, and it's, it's like .02, then, then technically speaking, it, it is considered light trespass. Now, we put that definition in there, but I can tell you that when it, if something like that were to go to court and we don't have a definition for it, the judge will use a dictionary, and that's, that's the definition that they will come to. So I, even, I, I like to put our definitions in there so that people who are designing their lighting plans and things can find it easily, but also, most of the definitions that I come up with are standard definitions. There, we didn't make anything up, you know, so I want to make sure that, that's clear also.
David, your original question was about underwater safety lights.
Yeah. I was just thinking, like, and I don't know the answer to this, but underwater safety lights at marinas.
I mean, they do have, so the...
But we're banning them based on the sort...
Well, the pier lights are the pedestal lights that go at the end of the pier.
But they're, they're not underwater.
Right, so I'm not really sure about that.
I just didn't know if there, if there were safety lights that you would put at the end of a, end of a pier, of a commercial.
I mean, besides, yeah, besides the, besides the, um, the, the, the light that typically goes at the end of the dock or pier, um, I don't think so, but I, I mean, I can contact the marinas and ask them. So I hadn't considered, like, there being a necessary underwater light, I mean...
And I don't know if they would need those.
Never seen any of them.
I'd say 90% of the docks and piers that we have do not have lights at the end of the docks. They've got pedestal lights, but they're up near their boat where they want to see their boat.
Right.
They're not out at the end of the dock.
And I, and I was mainly asking for commercial.
Yeah, right.
Not, not residential docks.
Which we have. I guess all we have is over modest channels.
See, that...
Yeah, mostly the marina district and then...
Yep.
Dock side, side.
Yeah, oh, um...
Maybe the blockade.
Seapath, block, yeah, blockade.
They don't want you to go around.
It's a commercial dock.
Yeah.
There's enough lights coming from the building that they don't need much out of the dock from blocking it.
Yeah. They're, they're working on it. They're getting there. So I think that's, I think that's the majority of the concerns that we had from our last conversation. Restrict to eliminate must versus shall, uh, wattage versus foot candles at 15 feet to 25 feet, and then essentially a prohibition on underwater lights in general, as long as they're attached to something that we, we can actually enforce. I think those are the big, the big things. And, um, and I can ask, I can, I can contact the marinas and ask them about, um, any need for underwater, um, safety or emergency lights.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Anything else, Robert?
That's all I have.
Safety lights may be just a temporary thing too, like if you have a broken island or something. So, can you, do you need to include a temporary use of emergency lights in there?
If it's temporary, I don't think that it's...
It doesn't matter, it does physically.
Well, it's just not permanent, blame... Well, I say that, but...
I guess you would put a lighted buoy above it if it's something underwater.
Yeah.
Make it more obvious than having this hook down in the water to see it.
Makes more sense.
Or sunken bed or something.
All right. Thank you, Robert, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Looks like we have three people here today. Does anyone have any public comment? I know we had some comment last, last meeting. Anyone have anything to say today? Seeing none, closing the public comment. Any discussion question among the board? Neil? Jim took your place last time. Because you were here, he asked your questions. Jim, you have any questions?
No, no, I changed a word and I used a reference to you. I'm gonna pull up Neil Burge and I need to change his word.
All right, seeing no discussion questions, um, I guess we need to, um, take a vote to make a motion to recommend this for approval to the Board of Alderman. Does anyone have such a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send a favorable recommendation to our Board of Alderman.
A second.
With the adjustments that were discussed.
Yeah, with the adjustments that we gave to Robert.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
I'm sorry, who's second is it?
I did.
Quietly.
All right. Let's see, any all business? No? Anyone on the board have anything to discuss? Good work.
Uh, is it the intent to take the other sections of the lighting ordinance one by one as we move forward and review them? Or what's the plan?
So I think the reason why we did it this way is we wanted to make sure we got the safety, the biggest safety issue out of the way. I think this was important, um, you know, for boats and stuff like that. So I think the intent is, is to start moving forward. It may be easier to kind of do them in sections. Out, if you're doing them in sections, I think I'd like to talk about commercial next, um, since that's one of the bigger, um, issues that we hear out here, is the commercial. So I think maybe it makes sense to either, next meeting in September or October, let's go ahead and start, um, looking at commercial.
Sure.
Issues.
That'd be pretty, that'd be pretty easy because I, I already have everything written.
And then what'll be after that, residential?
And then we'll do, then we'll do residential, yeah.
Yeah, and, and to be fair, there's not a whole lot of change to residential.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, um, I mean, there's a lot of the, um, updated language wattage to foot candles. And one of my, uh, one of the things that I wanted to add more than just about anything were the new illustrations and the definitions. And those are realistically the biggest changes, um, besides the modernization of the language. Um, I think that, um, if we can work on, like, carriage lights, um, because I know Kitty, I think you've got some, and there's a lot around town. And, you know, uh, I think that pretty much everybody that I've talked to is interested in, you know, preserving some of that, um, some of that lighting that may technically be out of compliance right now, so...
Every single light I have is out of compliance.
Well, should I take that as a complaint?
You're gonna be in a picture of the offenders right there.
Listen, my neighbors call and I cut that one off. My neighbor calls and I cut that one off. My neighbor calls and I cut down a tree. My neighbor calls and I cut that bush.
So I mean, uh, you know, some, some people have expressed that, you know, there's a, there's a way to reasonably do, um, the things that we, we may necessarily prohibit right now. Um, and then there's a way to drastically overdo it, and I think coming out of the ad hoc committee, the, um, I don't want to speak for everybody on the ad hoc committee, but what I got out of it was it's so hard to enforce subjectivity that it almost has to be an all or nothing, and finding a balance is very difficult, um, which is how you get back to it being a complaint-driven. And, and Neil has made the point several times that, to be perfectly honest, if you were to warm the light source to more amber color as opposed to the striking white or bluish color, I think a lot of your, your nuisance issues go away because, you know, some of that white light can be painful, but, and a light that is exactly the same lumens, that is significantly warmer, is far more pleasant to deal with.
Well, that's true, like at Poe's, you can see that.
Right, yeah. So I mean, and I think that when we get back to looking at the, the ordinance in general, I changed the recommendation to 3,000 Kelvin, I believe, which is, which is fairly warm on the, on the verge of amber. So when we start to look at that, you know, I think that the, you know, the, this board will wrestle with whether it should be recommended or required. You know, because it, at the end of the day, you don't have to change a fill, a, a fixture, you just need to change a bulb.
Correct.
And if you, if you get a warmer bulb, then the complaints start to go away. So, I mean, that's...
I think what you said and what Kitty said is important when we really think about the lighting ordinance, and I speak for me personally, keeping the same character of Ricefield Beach is, is important. I think we, I've been on this board for three years now, and that has been the feeling of the board, to keep that same character. But also providing a, a vehicle for those grossly outside the standard of what we believe is keeping that character, we have some sort of recourse. Um, so figuring that, that out would be what I would like, again, I don't, I don't speak for myself, but...
I agree.
Robert, you mentioned the graphics, and in the graphics, there are examples relative, uh, relative to piers, pier lighting. So the thought is, why don't you bring that into this piece that's gonna go forward on, on piers?
Okay.
I maybe have to redo it to keep, exclude the, the residential lighting kind of stuff.
You have some pictures for piers? Is that what you're saying?
The pedestal was, I think one of them.
We have, um, we have the illustrations for all the lights, and it does, um, wait, are you, are you saying that we should, I should bring in the pictures for the piers that we have now that are...
To go in this section?
Yes, to go in this section since it's relevant to piers, those, those examples are relevant to this.
Right, okay.
So just put a definition section maybe at the beginning and/or an appendix at the end and attach those? Is that, is that what you wanted?
Well, the document is a set of pages that shows the do's and the don'ts.
Right.
And it's a mix of things that would apply to the, the pier ordinances as well, and then some of them would apply to commercial and residential. So what I'm suggesting is pull out those pier references and put them in as a graphic piece, that's all.
I can do that, um, for sure, and the, nobody's ever had an issue with the illustrations because all they are is, is literally... And the, nobody's ever had an issue with the illustrations because all they are is, is literally what the lights are. Like, because some, if there's a question about what do you mean by, you know, uplighting or full shield, you know, fully shielded, or, uh, you know, those are clearly illustrated. And there are some that are allowed and some that are not, so.
Is it necessary to amend the motion?
Good work. Sure. Just to add, Neil, you want to amend the, um, what we're doing, just to add?
Sure.
The illustrations? I'll, I'll tack those on.
The ones relating to peers.
Sure, peers, yes, just focus on peers in the text.
And then, once we start discussing, uh, the further sections, we can, we can start adding other illustrations in there. Because there, there's nothing controversial about the illustrations. They're literally just what the lights are. And what our current, even what our current ordinance says is in there.
Because I could look at them and no mind work.
Right.
Didn't work.
And hold it up next to it.
It was too late, they were already on my ass, but.
I think we actually named one the Kitty light.
My neighbor did.
I did have, Mr. Schreiber, I did have one other concern is, um, when we would start looking at the lighting ordinance for the, regarding turtles.
So I think when we originally talked about it, correct me if I'm wrong, we wanted to address the, the turtles after we finished the lighting ordinance. Is that not correct?
I think it is because, so the, the way we're doing it now, our current, uh, ordinance does take into account the turtles. And so without removing that and doing it the way we're doing it now, which is addressing it piece by piece, the turtle, the lights that address the turtles doesn't change until we want to change it. And, um, I think with the help of, you know, the, the people that, that handle the turtles, uh, that it's been, I think it's okay. I mean.
So you have an enforcement vehicle in place right now?
Yeah, there is a, there is a mechanism for enforcement currently.
Okay.
Um, and if we were to completely rewrite it, then we would need to take it out, fix it, put it back in, which is how we did it at the ad hoc committee. But if we're just working section by section, then we just don't take out the turtles. I mean, the turtle section.
And then if we want to address.
Yes, and then we can tighten it up in the future.
Residential, and then if we don't think it's sufficient, then we do turtles.
Right, exactly.
Where do the most complaints come from, residential, commercial, turtles, which?
It's really, um, so, I mean, as far as, um, the number of complaints, I would have to say that it comes from residential for the most part. The, the non-compliance and the complaints typically would come from residential. Sometimes in the case of, I'm getting some questions about Beriza, um, with the uplighting there, and it exceeds the established, uh, average lumens in our current ordinance. So I'm having to, to look at that. Um, so commercial does happen, but that's basically just by virtue of there's so, there's so much less commercial than there is residential. And, but I can tell you that a lot of the times, whenever I go out to investigate, uh, a complaint, it's typically just, it's typically not something that's out of compliance, which is weird. But, um, I got a complaint about light trespass. I went out to the property, this is just an example, anecdotal. I went out to the property, the, the light was frosted, which means it was not a bare light source. I took the lumens meter to the property line, it was less than point one foot candles. By definition, it was not something that was, um, a violation. However, this falls into one of those situations where I, I, I think that if they had changed the bulb to be warmer, uh, more amber, then it probably wouldn't have ever been an issue. So I mean, they can be, um, I mean, those white lights can be, for lack of a better word, shocking. You know, but amber is just, it's just better overall. I mean, it's not really a preference. Um, I mean, when I'm in my garage, I prefer the white light. But when I'm walking down the street, I prefer the amber light.
Now, Beriza's different because, you know, they, it's not just the outside lights, it's the inside lights coming through the windows, and it's just.
And that's what's difficult. We also talked about.
We don't regulate inside.
Yeah, we can't regulate the inside, and that's really, um, what's at issue with Beriza because you're absolutely right, there's, there's significantly more lights on the inside of that building than on the outside. Now, there are some specific, uh, violations on the outside of the building.
Yeah.
But I think that, I think that what would, what would solve a lot of the complaints about Beriza or, or something along those lines is if they actually tint the windows on the inside.
Tear it down.
Well, I'm not saying.
Knolls.
That is not my knowledge.
Yeah, make it knolls.
Knolls, yep. All right, anything else?
Oh, I'll add the illustrations for your.
Well, do, I guess to Jim's point, what do you anticipate as far as when we can finish up the lighting ordinance?
When, by the end of the year?
Yeah, I think, I think realistically, we do residential September or October. Once we get that finished, move directly to commercial, hopefully in maybe November.
Yeah, I mean, I can send you what I have.
I thought we said we were gonna do commercial first and residential.
Sorry, the other way, commercial first and residential.
I can send you what I have, um, which is just a, which is essentially an updated version of the current ordinance. Um, and then that way you can read it and look at it and.
Well, let's plan on having, let's plan on having a talk about commercial in September.
Okay.
And then, and then have, after that discussion, potentially having some sort of text amendment to vote on in October for commercial. And then from a timeline, residential November with a potential text amendment December for residential. And then if we feel like we want to do sea turtles, we'll roll that in right to the beginning of the, um, you know, January. So, does that sound good with everyone?
Yeah. Sounds good.
David.
Yes, ma'am.
And Borg.
See, put your name. Come on up and give us your name.
Excuse me.
They make me do that.
Sue Bullock from the chamber, but the question is really with regard to the peers because the peers set beyond the setback line and are really characterized by a different, whole set of different rules. Are you dealing with those or are you going to deal with those as commercial, as in Marina lighting? Or are you, I, I don't know the code well enough to know whether or not there is a separate section with the peers because there's a whole, uh, there's a whole different state standard in terms of riparian rights and setbacks and all of those things. As you will remember, Kitty, we went through all of that when the Oceanic Pier was rebuilt. But it's, I, I don't know how you address it. I don't know whether they are considered a commercial entity. They have special use permits, but I don't know what it is. So it's, and their requirements are different than our Marina commercial peers.
I think that should be a commercial.
I just raised the issue.
Neil, we didn't, we didn't separate that, did we?
We didn't differentiate that. Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's a set of state standards, uh, that wasn't on the radar screen.
Yeah, we did not. John was with us, John Wessel.
Right. But I can't remember.
In the consult.
The detail, I'm sure it's in the, in, if I went back and look at all of the minutes back from that period of time.
We talked about it, but didn't differentiate, differentiate.
Correct.
We also talked about the, the height of the lights and how it, how it necessarily wouldn't, um, apply to, uh, the, for example, what we do at the Marina District in the residential as far as that ten-foot height limit. We did discuss that. I'll, I'll dig that out and find it for you also.
But we should, we should understand if there's some state.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I didn't come across any, but I will, I will focus my search on that now.
I guess there's some, uh, there's probably some information out there, other peers, other places. Can't be the first neighborhood that tried to fix this.
I think there are, but we had a, when we did the turtle revampment, the initial, uh, section on turtles we got into, and that was during the period of time of the Oceanic rebuilding, and their code is, uh, were different and their setback and their regulation and their camera permits are, are different than Marina's. That's all I remember.
We didn't, we didn't talk about that?
Yeah.
Sue, are you suggesting, uh, that somewhere in your deep memory here, um, that we don't have the jurisdiction regarding this?
You may not have jurisdiction on some areas on peers because they're forward of the setback line. They actually sit in state, uh, access.
Well, I think the one thing.
You know, that is something that Wessel researched and then should be brought forward. And Robert and Tony, if you will remember, Tony, you were here, and, and so that's somewhere back in that data. But I asked the question because I've been asked the question by the Oceanic in terms of which standards are we going to be applying and working with?
I think what we're gonna do is, before it goes anywhere, you'll forward the text amendment to Grady, right?
Yeah.
And have him take a look at it. So once Grady, Grady, he'll, if there's any issues, then Grady should be able to find them. And then he'll, he'll like this.
We actually didn't get into terms.
I think what it comes down to is that the town within its jurisdiction can enforce the code as long as it doesn't conflict with state law. And the state does not regu, the, the state regulates the construction of the pier, width and length and height, et cetera, but they don't specify anything about lights. So as long as we don't come into conflict with, with state rules, we shouldn't have an issue. And we still have our extraterritorial jurisdiction to fall back on, which is like two miles. Well, I think standard is two miles. On the west side, it's the middle of the ISW.
I think John would have said something if there was.
Yeah, as long as, as long as we're not conflicting with state rules, it should be okay. But I will verify that, so.
Well, any state regulations are gonna trump ours anyway.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And it might be US Coast Guard.
The question arises because Oceanic Pier was built to code and grandfathering of whatever it is they have met code then, and they are special use permit. So I don't, my question is, you know, are you looking at them as a commercial in Marina area or as a pier?
It's definitely zone commercial.
Yes.
And it's definitely a commercial use. Um, and as far as grandfathering is, there was a three-year sunsetting period on the lighting ordinance. So if they were out of compliance three years after the original ordinance was adopted, then they're in violation. They didn't change it over because it was always understood that, uh, coming into compliance would be a three-year ordeal, not necessarily ordeal, but a three-year process. And it wasn't a major overhaul. It was simply, you know, put a cap on it so you don't produce uplighting, um, that sort of thing. So the grandfathering of a lighting ordinance just doesn't exist in our ordinance because of the three-year sunsetting.
Anything else?
That's good.
The rain's lightened up a little bit.
That year that I'm to market.
So we're going to, let me just, real quickly, because we have a holiday coming up in September.
What holiday is that?
Yep, it's the beginning of fall holiday. I don't know what it's called, but it's been nice to be eighty degrees and sixty-five degrees. And just for fun, um, look up, uh, August fifteenth and sixteenth on Ventuski, on Ventuski.com on Wrightsville Beach.
Why? Go ahead and spill the beans.
I mean, it shows, I mean, it changes all the time, but today one hundred percent showed up. Cat three, right here.
What?
Yeah, so it's a pretty good weather site. If you, you know, the tropical tidbits, tropical tidbits is good because that'll give you your GFS and your Euro. But then Ventuski.com, actually, you can put your date, you can put your, um, I mean, it gives you everything. It'll give you, it's not gonna snow, but it'll give you snow forecast for the next two weeks.
So is it an app?
I'll, I'll forward it to you right now.
Oh, August fifteenth to sixteenth in nineteen fifty-five was also Hurricane Diana.
Oh, great.
Hopefully it'll be the only one.
I won't talk about that anymore.
But there was a.
What's the name of the thing?
Ventuski, V N, I'll send it to everyone, T U S K Y dot com. It's a really, it's a good little tool.
I've got it somewhere on my phone. Let's probably add it.
And it says the fifteenth and sixteenth, we're having a storm.
Today.
Cat three. Great.
I mean, the good news is, is if they're predicting it two weeks out, it's the likelihood of it actually being correct. But we'll see.
It's likely what? Was that last time?
We'll see, we'll see if.
It's unlikely to be correct because it's so four L.
But anyway, um, motion, next meeting.
Thanks for that, anyway.
So Charlie sent that out in the meeting.
Call it early, it's not gonna happen, I hope.
Is there any reason to, to change it? Labor Day's on Monday. I mean, is there any reason to change it?
Well, is anyone gonna be out of town for Labor Day?
For both, for both, so then I'll be gone.
Two and nine?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll have to do it then.
I'll be back on Labor Day.
All right, so the question is, is do we want to have it on the second or do we want to have it on the night?
I'm good either one.
Me too.
I'm good with one.
I just don't know.
We're just gonna, we're gonna roll on the second then. Um, we'll just do. Are you good?
I'll be here, yeah.
Neil, you good?
Might tell Dean, you.
The second?
Normal, be normal to you, yep, yep.
Always as normal he had.
Don't make the change.
Robert, I, I need to do that on Zoom.
Okay, I can set it up for you.
Thank you.
Cool, all right, same, we'll do that. We'll see everyone on September second.
Robert, do we have anything else on the second other than lighting ordinance? Do you know of anything coming up?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so that's, if Mark.
We may not even have, right.
Yeah, so.
Just leave it like it is.
Robert, um, can you comment on the conditional zoning that went through the Board of Alderman?
Oh, yeah, um, they wanted to, the Board of Ald, I took it to the Board of Alderman, and, uh, they wanted to think about it and give people enough time to, uh, think about it and come back for the next public hearing. It'll go to them in September, next, the next meeting. Uh, they wanted me to add a cooldown period to it. That was really the only revision that, uh, everybody commented on. A cooldown period meaning that they couldn't. So with the conditional zoning, they were talking about, um, you know, the process that I had laid out, if they got denied on the conditional zoning or they didn't agree to the conditions, uh, they wanted to make sure that they didn't start like immediately. See, with special use permits, you're required a cooldown period. Usually it's a year or so, depending on the municipality. I think ours is a year. But with conditional zoning, it, it, it's, it's not uncommon to add a, a cooldown period like a special use, uh, permit cooldown period. I didn't include that because it's not a standard, but I'm, I, when I bring it back to the Board of Alderman, I will include a cooldown period. So it just, it just prevents, uh, application after application after application. But honestly, the entire process takes like three to four months for conditional zoning on a good stretch. So I couldn't imagine someone, you know, not agreeing to their conditions on the result, on their conditional zoning, and then immediately trying again to do the exact same thing with the entire process. I think it's just sort of baked into the, into the, into the system. But I'm gonna add one. It'll just mirror what our special use permit says, which, which means that if you're applying for conditional zoning, then you, and, and you don't agree to the conditions or the board declines to rezone the property, then you will have to wait a year before you apply to rezone it for conditional zoning. That's, that's basically where we're at for that. So I, I don't, I don't expect it to be, um, well, I never expect any, I go in with, you know, I, I go in trying not to expect anything because I've been wrong so many times. Um, but it should be pretty straightforward since everybody's had enough time to, to read it, digest it, and the public's been out there and the public for a while now. I think everybody agrees that it's a good system. Um, it allows the town to, um, look at a project before they're, um, sort of blindsided by a project. It also allows, uh, public input, um, which in a lot of cases for special use permits, if somebody, you know, four houses down doesn't like something that's going on over there, they have no standing to say anything about it. But, you know, with conditional zoning, I think you get a little bit, well, you get a lot more public input and, uh, because of the requirement for the, uh, input meeting. The planning board gets to talk about it, not only with each other, but with the applicant, with the public, you know. So you guys will have a lot more input to forward a favorable recommendation, which you can actually make, um, a favorable or not a favorable recommendation for the rezoning, which you can. which you can't do with a special use permit. So I think there will be a lot more involvement in the development of a project that would hopefully fit the community more than just sliding a quasi judicial proceeding under that nobody has a legal right to speak against, you know. So I think that's sort of the direction we're heading in.
Did Grady weigh in regarding standing?
Yes.
Just a little something.
Yeah, he said that, so anybody can say anything, that's pretty much the consensus. But as far as notification goes, 500 feet, we're only notifying people 500 feet out, but.
Well, you say anyone, though, I think what he's talking about is residents of Riceville Beach, or?
No, so for example, if you do conditional zoning across the street there, I mean, the, you know, people in Wilmington, or across the bridge, the people in Wilmington can say something about the conditional zoning. If, if this Galleria project were a conditional zoning issue, I feel certain that it would never happen. But that's not us, we don't have anything to do with that, so. But, you know, I think that ever since we talked about conditional zoning, Pender does it, part, some municipalities in Brunswick County do it, which is where I got our, you know, our template. It's, it's pretty widespread in North Carolina now. City of Wilmington, some of the planning commission came and we talked about for, for the city of Wilmington, because I feel like with their current ordinance, what happened over with that project, I just don't believe that there's any way that that infrastructure can support the number of units that they're installing in there. And if, what I've heard as far as NCDOT estimates are concerned, if you add 4,000 vehicular trips per day on Riceville Avenue, you will never get down Riceville Avenue. So I don't know what that's gonna look like, but I think that that has a lot to do with their inability to do anything about it, which, you know, I think conditional zoning will have a lot, you know, will give, it's just something they didn't have in their, their toolbox, so to speak, because.
It'll give a voice.
Right. I mean, as far as vested rights go, it's like if you look in, if you look in the table of uses and you see that, oh yeah, I can do whatever this says, then, you know, a, a lot of, I mean, I live in Wilmington, so a lot of the complaints are coming out, well, why do they keep building? And it's because that they can't stop it. You know, I mean, the city council has no legal right to say no if it is a permitted use, you know. So a lot of people don't understand that. But with conditional zoning, you know, like I say, you essentially do what Riceville Beach does, make everything conditional zoning, and then you get to talk about everything that goes in there. You get to weigh your options, instead of just saying, okay, well, we legally can't say no, so sure, go ahead and put up your.
It's transparency, you know, people are allowed to say what they do, and then if the city council makes the decision to approve it, then everyone.
Exactly.
I mean, people know how people feel and.
Robert, could you say that the board was expecting feedback, and was there a mechanism for that?
Well, there's a, the public hearing at the September meeting, that's, because it's on the, right, no, nothing like that. I mean, it's just they, they wanted, so it's been posted on the website. It, it will be a public hearing in September, and that's where they would hear the feedback, that's what they're expecting.
So just so I'm clear, let's say we're doing a conditional use on the island. Grady still thinks that standing extends to anyone, anywhere?
Well, conditional, well, because it acts as a standard rezoning, it's just, anybody can say anything about rezoning a parcel, whether you live there or not.
Okay, we had just talked about.
Yeah, we're just not gonna notify them, we just don't have any, I don't, and I think that Grady's opinion is that we just don't have any legals, you know, right to say that in a public hearing for a legislative decision.
You can't limit.
That we can't limit people, I mean, but it doesn't make any sense that you would have somebody from, you know, Virginia coming in here and saying what happens over by, you know, across the bridge, but.
Right, okay.
I mean, they just, they would just choose not to, you know, consider it, really.
All right, anyone else? Motion to adjourn, anyone?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.